Yeah.
So we'll step through a couple of procedural things, seeing that there's more public here than the normal, and I think that that's great. Really appreciate people coming in to provide input and opinions. So there'll be time to do that, and we'll go through the ability to do that with using Zoom. So as I said, I want to call this meeting to order. This is the Nottingham Planning Board for Wednesday, August 12th, 2020. And it's, I do need to read a couple of things, and one of the reasons why we are doing the Zoom meeting is because of COVID-19. So in anticipation for the extension of Executive Order 2020-15, the Nottingham Planning Board will be holding a virtual hearing. Access to the meeting is given through Zoom. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in the meeting. And I appreciate everybody's patience, and hopefully we won't have too many technical issues going forward. These are all pursuant to the Governor's emergency order. So with that, I would like to do a roll call for the members that are here. And if you guys just want to anticipate being unmuted, and then, well, once we're introduced, we'll go through some of the logistics. I'll ask Steph to go through that. So Ed Veal?
Here.
Gary Anderson?
Here.
Joe Clough?
Present.
Tyler Eaton?
Here.
Sue Mooney?
Here.
Ian McKinnon?
Here.
And alternate Spuzz Davies?
Here.
And Leanne Gast?
Here.
Am I leaving anyone out? Okay. So we have a full board. My name is Dirk Rotenheis. I am the chairman of the board here, so I will facilitate the majority of the meeting. Steph or Joanna, could you just chime in? Now, Steph, you've got a pretty down pat of the operation of when we are in a hearing and how people can participate.
Yeah, so during the hearing, we asked that everybody stays on mute. That helps with the background noise and helps everybody make sure that the crowd is getting a great volume of everything. When you're, when we're during the, the public participation part, if you could go to the chat or the participant screen and click the raise hand if you have something to say, I will then call your name, we'll unmute you, and you can give your piece. Other than that, please keep yourselves on mute.
Okay, thank you, Steph. So we have two items on the agenda for administrative cases here. So the first one is a continuance from June 24th, and that's case number 20003 SUB. It's an application for 14 lot subdivision from Robert DiBerto. Two new roads will be constructed as a part of this subdivision. The property is identified as Tax Map 7, Lot 1N, and is located off of Mitchell Road, a scenic road in Nottingham. The last time this was before the board was July 8th, and, and there was a request for a continuance from July 22nd to the meeting present, so to tonight. We have received materials through the application process, and we have accepted the application in previous meeting. This project has been sent out to a, an engineering consultant for the town who has reviewed the lap, the plans from June relative to engineering, drainage, roadways, and the like within the subdivision. We've received comments back, and as well as comments from other Town of Nottingham staff departments. And those various letters and comments are available on the website. And one of the things we also did was a site walk where the public was invited. Unfortunately, it was a very rainy day, but we did have a few of us go out and view the site and walk all of the roadway components and, and the road itself. Before we get a conversation or questions with, with Mr. Berry, we're not sure how much more information they will, he has at this time, but two things that came up at the last meeting was the question of one of the staff, well, the Public Works Director for the town had requested paving of Mitchell Road for the length of the subdivision area, all the way to Smoke Street. And unfortunately, due to a lot of vacation scheduling, he and I, or anybody from the board, has not been able to have that communication. But right now, as it stands, the recommendation from him is to have that road paved by the applicant to offset or mitigate some of the impacts. The second piece, and we'll talk, we'll talk about that in just a second. The other one is, it was brought to our attention relative to a zoning potential. And I just want to run through a couple of things, and that is, in the zoning regulation, and that's under Article 3, that's B4, we have a wetlands conservation, a wetlands overlay district within the town, and that is anywhere that there are poorly drained, very poorly drained soils, it is considered within this overlay district. And one of the things that we do indicate in there is that there are some permitted uses within that overlay district. And the permitted uses result in really, you can't erect any structures or alter the surface configuration by adding dredging or filling. And that's specifically right out of the zoning ordinance. We had some questions on how that gets applied and whether it would be applicable to this specific subdivision. And I reached out to the zoning chair, and the zoning chair has not had, did not indicate anything of precedence, and nor would a precedent, even if it was set, be, be valid for them. They're unlike courts, they, it wouldn't be a precedent setting if, if it happened previously. But they do, they would take it up each application individually. And I'm, I'm going to ask the board for some of the input on that, and that's really specific just to this application, but it could result in other applications as well. In going through some of this, the language that's there, because it's talking about dredging and filling, and not sure if there's enough clarity or strength in it to apply it to roads and storm drainage system, because it says structure, and drains and roadways always require dredging and filling. And within that overlay dri, district, we have it in there as anything that that's prohibited. So that's just something I want the board to be aware of. You know, would want to go through and have a discussion, and then also get some direction that we can give the applicant. So I'm going to be asking to evoke, after we have a discussion, whether this, the planning board would recommend this going to the zoning board, or if we feel comfortable enough that this does not apply, because this is up to the board to decide that. And when I say dredging and filling, the, those actions that happen within those wetlands are regulated by the state. And so the Town of Nottingham does not have the ability or jurisdiction within those wetlands, but we do in some of those very poorly drained areas. So we, we could impose some of that. I guess together with this, there was also the conversation or discussion about, the definition that we have is, in the zoning ordinance is inharmonious use of wetlands, and it's those uses that are incompatible with the purposes of this ordinance, provided that, in the case of uncertainty, the use should be denied and determined upon appeal of the Board of Adjustment in the same manner determined by statute. And that's just, it's a definition that's inharmonious use of wetlands. We do not have that, we, meaning the town, in the zoning ordinance, does not have that in any of the regulatory sections. It just shows up in the definition. So how that gets applied, I'd also look to the board for some input. So at this point, as far as the application, you know, I want to make sure that we just discuss whether a variance is necessary in the board's mind, or it is not. So I'll open that up to the board for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, Ed Veal, I was the one that, that flagged this, so I'll, I'll speak towards, towards a little bit. I think you did a great job in summarizing the points. The, the butters had, had a lot of concern about the wetlands and the, and such, and which made me re, look back through our ordinance and make sure that, you know, we're catching everything we're supposed to be. So you, you touched upon the few areas there, and then also, one area that it comes up is in the subdivision regulations, 14.1, the character of land. Number three, which specifically states that lots shall contain contiguous areas of developable land such that driveway building, water supply, sewage disposal, and other improvements can be constructed without filling of wetlands, or other such adverse impacts that could be eliminated by different subdivision design. The lumber of knots may be reduced by the board to reduce adverse impacts. The board shall have the authority to require design changes to minimize impacts regardless of the actions of other local or state permitting actions, such as the issue with the permit to fill wetlands for a driveway crossing. If subdivision impact, number five, or are accessed by designated scenic roads, mitigating measures shall be taken to preserve the quality of those roads. Sorry, that's a different second part. But, um, so the zoning portion alone, to me, i, if, if they're looking to dredge and fill and alter the configuration of the land, seems like it's not a non-permissive use of that and would require a variance. And then the subregs kind of seem like it might be an area that we would have to tie into this as well.
Okay. Anybody else have comments or question, meaning board?
Dirk, this is Susan. I just have to say that we need to pay attention to the expert engineering plans that have been brought to the board for storm drainage systems, storm drainage structures to mitigate storm runoff that, that will happen with this development. So I don't find that these storm drainage structures are inharmonious with the wetland complex.
Okay. And we also brought that up at the last meeting, and, and Mr. Berry had tried, had indicated, the applicant's engineer indicated that he would look at moving some of those structures out of those wetland fill areas. And before I bring him on board, whether that has been done, we have not seen any new material or plans saying that that has been revised at this point.
I have another question. It has to do with wetlands, and maybe Mr. Berry can answer this. He had indicated that Fish and Game might recommend or insist that there be a buffer that goes around all of the wetland complex because of the sensitivity of wildlife habitat there. And I have not heard whether we've gotten any comment from Fish and Game or the Heritage Bureau about this buffer, no disturbed buffer.
Okay. And before I, I have Mr. Berry respond, I would like to get his opinion on, or at least his response on this discussion. Ed, in, in talking, in listening to your comments, I mean, one of the things that I feel the applicant has done is trying to avoid wetlands where possible and minimize those impacts. So there are, I believe, two areas of impact, but they're fairly minimal to get the, the roadway across. In a different configuration, I think there would be more impacts with a roadway network system, or, or significantly less lots, which is, you know, an option as well.
Yeah, and I, and I don't disagree with that. I just try to be careful of stepping on the toes of other elected boards. So I try to be careful, like the zoning ordinance, I, I always feel like is an area that, we, we write it initially, but it's then controlled by the zoning board if, if, for, so I just try to be cautious of, if, if it indicates that we might go either way and, and it's leaning towards a zoning decision, then, then I push it, in my opinion, I push it that way.
Yeah.
That's me, so.
Yeah, and, and
For a reason.
As I mentioned, I, when I brought this up to the zoning chair, there was no direction given to, you know, say, yes, this is, should be brought before the, the board, or whether it shouldn't be. So that, that's, that's where it stood, and it is up to the planning board to guide that if necessary, if we feel, because there won't be any other way unless a applicant just decides that they do need a variance. So there is no other way that they would be required to have a variance in a subdivision if, if not by the planning board's request, or the conservation's request. Any other board members before I bring Mr. Berry in to respond?
Just, Mr. Chairman, just a short, short input would be, you know, I'm, I'm looking at this as a drainage system as one entity, and not really a structure. But I think the drainage system, as we, if we call it that, does have many requirements and, and much to look at, and location, et cetera. So just my input on that.
Thanks, Gary.
Sorry, Mr. Veal, just for clarity, because it's two members that mentioned the drainage structures. I'm, I'm not really, what I'm specifically talking about are, are areas of direct wetlands impacts, which are roads. The drainage structures, to the best of my knowledge, are impacting buffers, but not direct implant, wetland impact. What I'm, so what I'm looking at for the, for this particular zoning ordinance, the way it's written, is the, what the, the poorly drawn drain and very poorly drained soils themselves, and the direct impact to those by the addition of drill, fill and dredge.
I agree with that.
Okay, no other comments from the board. I would like to get Mr. Berry's response. And if, we, we haven't received any other materials since June, and, and last we did speak that you were going to have some, some revisions made, but we haven't seen anything since.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Christopher Berry with Berry Surveying and Engineering. We had a number of outstanding issues from the last planning board meeting. The last thing I want to do is send them to you one at a time. So that's why you haven't seen any revisions from us. We have just recently received the report back from our historian or architectural, I'm sorry, our historian, and that report has now gone to, to the Division of Historical Resources. And so that was one of the large outstanding issues. Now that we have that, and we've submitted all of our state permits, we will submit a full package back to you. But this was, this and the, the other item that the chairman mentioned are really two that are kind of hanging out there that, you know, if we need to make a trip to the zoning board, we wanted to know that now. So I guess with that, we will, we will gladly submit a complete response package back to you, which will cover all of the items that were discussed at the last meeting. But with respect to the actual zoning question, I think, I think you need to look at, as the chairman and the vice chairman have pointed out, the, the permitted and, and non-permitted uses within that actual zoning. But I think, in doing that, I think it's important to think about what the authors meant. And, you know, I, I think that the intention there was that structures, and Mr. Veal brings this up in the subdivision regulations, you know, it's inappropriate to fill wetlands for the purposes of meeting setbacks, or it's inappropriate for construction in a residential sense, for the construction of land to allow for more developable lots. Or if this subdivision were to not cross at the least impacting places, or provide for additional crossings for the needless impact that would promote further development, but not be harmonious with the land, I think that's where that definition of inharmonious use comes into play. And so when you take those, when you take the ordinance and you, you look at a lot of the objectives that the Wetlands Board puts in front of us through the use of, you know, least impacting alternatives, narrowest point, construction standards, narrowing slopes, providing for larger structures, even though smaller structures work fine hydraulically, the larger structures are, are more environmentally friendly for a whole host of reasons, which we've discussed with the board in the past. And so I think when you look at all of, all of that in one big context, and you review one plan, I think the board needs to ask itself, you know, is, are those impacts harmonious with the land? And if they are not, then I think at that point, the board should consider potentially sending this to the zoning board. Because at that point, you're looking at, what is the actual hardship in the other five, you know, four or five criteria for variance for that applicant to request much larger impacts than may be necessary for an alternative design. And so if, if we were crisscrossing through these wetlands without respect for a lot of the objectives in your ordinance, a lot of the objectives in the new state permitting process, then I might agree that, that require a zoning variance. If you have a commercial use that's trying to fill for development, the board might consider that, that, that point, that is a true structure, and that require a variance. But our analysis of this was that a pure wetlands crossing to gain access from one side of a, a, an upland to another upland area for the purposes of gaining access for development, for the purposes of connecting roadways, which the board asked us to do, we found that when you look at, when you look at the total picture of what the wetlands overlay says, coupled with the, the definition, then this would not require a, a variance. With respect to the, the buffers, I think many of the board members have discussed this, but it was part of my narrative for tonight. Those, those situations are required, really, at the lowest point, to capture storm water, treat it, and those systems are pretty much put in place on every project now to mimic the functions and values of the surrounding wetland systems, or mimic the removal of the buffer. And, and again, I've noted before the board, those are really required at the lowest point, hydraulically. There'd be no sense in putting them at the highest point possible. They wouldn't catch any of the storm water that's coming from the roadways. So again, I don't think that those structures or stormwater BMPs need variances either. But what I committed to the board and the chairman was, we would look at, to be as compliant as possible, we would look at the placement of the actual outlet concrete structures, and if we could slide them outside of buffers, we will happily do that. But, but note that there may be instances where that's not feasible. To Sue's question, we have received comment back from the Fishing Game, and they have asked us for permanent easements around the remaining buffers. So instead of just a local construction setback, which would allow people to remove vegetation within those buffers, Fishing Game has asked us to keep those vegetated, deed restrict those on each individual deed, and we've committed to the Conservation Commission, and I believe to the planning board, to installing placards along those buffers to enlighten future owners of those buffering requirements, so that people aren't cutting into the buffer. And that will help protect the, the wetland itself, the water quality feature that those buffers have and maintain, and keep a corridor through the project for the wildlife that is, is a concern for the Natural Heritage Bureau. So those are my thoughts on that topic. And then lastly, the board mentioned a pavement plan for roads in town that was apparently, from my understanding, was developed by an engineering consultant that you hired. We would like a copy of that so that we could further look at the paving requirements of Mitchell Road, so that we can respond professionally to, to CMA and then the road agent's comment also.
Okay, we'll make sure what information we have as a town is available for you.
Thank you.
Before I go back to the board, I do want to ask Sue Mooney, who's the Conservation Commission representative. I mean, this application was before the board, and I wanted to just get the summary of those elements, and if there was discussion of the dredge and fill or impacts of those very poorly drained, poor, poorly drained soils.
Um, when we did the site walk, Sam and I, with the planning board, we inspected those two wetland crossings, and they seemed to be adequate for each particular site. What we did do after we had entertained this applicant at our meeting maybe two months ago, that, um, we were concerned with the wildlife buffer around, I'm sorry, the, the no cut, no disturbed buffer around the wetland systems, and also that the road pavement be rough enough to allow critter crossings such as amphibians and snakes, so they can get purchase as they cross the road. And Mr. Berry had indicated that they would use a large size stone in the paving project. And I, and I think that, that was about it for recommendations.
Okay, well, thank you.
You should have a letter on file from the Conservation Commission. I don't have it in front of me at the moment outlining the conversation we had with, with Berry Surveying and Engineering.
Yeah, we, I, I do remember it again. I, well, not again, but I don't have it in front of me as well. I was just asking if you had. I was just asking if you had more information than I have and you did, so thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
So we'll have a little bit more time to deal with the pavement. And I would like to make sure that we have that conversation with the Public Works Director. He's, he's just been out on vacation, so I believe he'll be back next week. But I do need to, or we as a board need to figure out what to do with this as far as zoning, whether we will recommend this to, to go to the zoning board or not. So we'll need to have a motion and then a vote to send this to the zoning board or not.
Mr. Chair, it's Mr. Veal. Based on the verbiage in the specific well and overlay district of the zoning ordinance, I, it's my opinion that this would require zoning relief to alter or alter the, through dredge or fill of any of the wetlands.
Could you form that into a motion?
Quick question before we go into a motion, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Since I'm fairly new to the board and how they specifically operate, when's the last time that we, the board approved a project that included a road across a wetland? Does that, do they have the top of their head remember that? I think the applicant has his finger up.
Mr. Berry knows it.
Well, this has been one of my contentions right along is that, and I don't mean any disrespect, but this is sort of a new interpretation or a new reading of this ordinance. And I, I would really like the board to understand what it is that this potential motion means. We, we had a, a project on Route Four that was approved by this board with a small dredge and fill. And if this board continues with the, with the thought that any dredge and fill within the wetland of any kind requires a variance, that that would mean that any application that comes before you that proposes any dredging and filling in a wetland would need to go to the zoning board. And I just don't think that that's what the, the ordinance intended.
And that's kind of where my thought, I've been kind of going back and forth, reading the definition within the wetland conservation area, definitions within the zoning ordinance. And I interpret it as when they say the erection of this, any structure, I take that as a physical building or something that is intended to stay there. And I'm just, from my past work experience, I've never seen a roadway require a, a variance from the zoning board. And I guess I have concerns of sending it to the zoning board because the, because of the fact that the applicant would have to prove hardship. Which I'm not sure what that could be. And I know just in the past, I mean, we do, I'm sure the roadways have been approved without an order, without a variance needed.
Yeah. Ian, I, I, I don't believe that this has been sent to the zoning board prior. That A doesn't mean that it shouldn't have. If we have it in our regulation, if it is a requirement, that doesn't, you know, because it was done wrong before, doesn't mean that it, we continue that just because of that precedence. But I, in, I'm trying to stay fairly, very objective in this matter because we have board members that would like to make sure like all the voices are heard. And I want to make sure that we are giving the right direction for this applicant as well as other applicants as they come forward. But I, I think that all of the wetland filling operations is a state matter and it's not clear in our regulations that we could uphold the, the elements of dredging and filling. It's, to me, it's not very strong.
I'd say I agree with that. And I guess to add to that is if we take that interpretation, will that affect every single time an individual homeowner looks to impact a wetland that it now goes to a variance instead of an expedited state permit? Where we just get notified?
I don't know that.
So when I'm reading the, everybody's, I think getting, we're getting stuck on just the very first half of that permitted use sentence and we're completely ignoring the second half. So that does not result in the erection of any structure. Okay, let's forget about that part for a minute. Or alter the surface configuration of the land by addition of fill or dredging. So that's where, and we built into the zoning ordinance specifically the wetlands overlay district, identifying that this is a, an area that needs special focus and special attention more than just regular land. So we have the buffer is one area that, that we have some, some restrictions to. But specifically when it comes to impacting, direct impacts to wetlands, it was built into the zoning ordinance, in my opinion, that these areas we need to tread lightly and, and be cautious with. And we did not build in a waiver process, which might be by design or oversight. So we didn't give ourselves that, that avenue of being able to waive these requirements in situations where an applicant has demonstrated that they're, they're trying to do so minimally. But when it comes to, to my opinion in the zoning ordinance, if there's something that is a foot outside the ordinance, that's zoning. If it's a hundred feet, it's still zoning. I don't think we can go back and forth on and say, well, it's a little bit of, uh, so we, we should just pass it. So that, again, that's my thought, but the, where I'm getting stuck on is the fact that it says, or alter the surface configuration of the land by dredging or filling, even if there's no structure being built.
But that in itself says that every single wetlands application dredging or filling is in a sense, not allowable.
That's where I'm, I'm just trying to make sure we're not having too much crossover with state approval and local approval. And I'll, I'll agree with Mr. Veal that that second part, if you read it by the letter of the law, it does require a variance under that language. But then I guess where's the separation between the state approval, which is required and the local approval? I guess it's two hoops to jump through. It's more so, I think, just there's some, it's more confusion for us and making sure that we're doing the right process.
Well, I would say it's our responsibility to, to, you know, guide this applicant. And, you know, if it's a vote, then whatever, if it's a straw poll, maybe, maybe that's easier. But I, I really think we, we absolutely have to give him an answer.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. This is Susan. I'm interested as to what Steph from Stratford Regional Planning has for a comment on this conundrum that we have.
That's a good question, Sue. I think, I think in this, in this situation, it's really going to be up to her to interpret the, the intent of the ordinance and, you know, what it said and, and to be consistent. Whatever you guys feel that that means is up to you. I'm sorry, I can't give you a, a yes or no answer, but I think this is really in your hands.
Okay, thank you.
Only thing I can provide is, you know, research into other situations, if that's what you would like.
Maybe, maybe you could answer. So in some areas of zoning and subdivision regs, towns can be more restrictive than the state and in other areas the state gets that. You know, that leverage where we, they have final say, not us. Any idea if this is, if wetlands are an area that, that towns have can, can be more restrictive or is it out of our hands with the dredge and fill permits?
As far as my experience has been, it has been that buffers, anything outside the jurisdictional wetland area can be dictated by the local authority. Anything within the wetland is the jurisdiction of state DES. That's just been my experience in the past. And Ian, I'm not sure if you've dealt with these as well.
Yeah, I'd agree. That's the same thing. That's exactly, you know, when we're designing our projects, it's you hit that wetland line and you're now in state jurisdiction. I'm trying to, I've been trying to think off the top of my head of projects in the past where we, there's come across similar language to this. Nothing comes to mind. And that's where I think we're getting stuck is the, the intent and interpretation. I'm really just kind of going off past experience.
A quick search of the New Hampshire Municipal Association. There's a question about whether or not towns can be more restrictive than the municipality, than the state. And they specifically give an answer about the state regulates dredge and fill wetlands under RSA 482A, but towns and cities are allowed to regulate wetlands more restrict, more restrictively than the state.
What, which RSA?
Yeah, what RSA was that?
No, this was New Hampshire Municipal, I'm sorry, New Hampshire Municipal Association. There was a question about how towns and state can regulate things differently. And they, they referenced the RSA 482A, which is what, how the state regulates dredge and fill in wetlands. But it specifically states that towns and cities are allowed to regulate well, it's more strictly than the state. And then further in the answer, it says, in those cases, the applicant may be required to obtain approvals from not only the state, but also from the municipality. And municipality may apply more stringent requirements than the state does. It is also possible that a project can receive a state permit, but not qualify for a local permit.
Well, let me do this. I'm going to go back a little bit on my word and not press that we have a vote. I, I am concerned that we're, we're not necessarily understanding our own regulation and what it has. So I, I'm, I'm going to say that we have to couch that and request from our Stratford Regional Planning Commission to advise us on that, look into it and advise it.
I can do that. I did want to mention that Leanne is raising her hand and asking.
Go ahead, Leanne.
I just had a comment that I had saw on it's the DES website. Same thing Ed was saying, that protection of wetlands and adjacent uplands on a local level can provide additional oversight for proposed activities in wetlands and establish buffers that maintain the functions and values of wetlands. And they give some, some guidelines for local regulation of wetlands.
Okay. I'll ask, I'll, I'll ask the board if that's, you know, if you feel like making a decision, then, then okay. I'm, I'm a little bit concerned as it has been mentioned that we're not really on the same page of understanding what's in that regulation.
Mr. Chairman, this is Joe Clough. My concern with delaying a vote on this is that we're then pushing the applicant back by at least another meeting. And knowing that we do have the DES as a backstop for wetland protection in the best interests of the environment and, and the town, I feel like if we delay to try to figure out our own protocols, it's just pushing back on the applicant where we do have a backstop with the state.
Thanks, Joe. And, and, you know, to, to some degree, Mr. Berry, what, what is the square footage of the impact?
I believe it's right around 6,000 square feet. And that's cumulative, cumulative between both crossings. Can I chime in a little bit on the towns having more restriction than the state and what our experience has been?
Sure.
So oftentimes, we find that towns and their conservation commissions are more progressive than the state. Wetland rules and law allow the regulators to impose on us. As a for instance, there are stream crossing guidelines. None of the wetland crossings on this particular project meet stream crossing, trigger the stream crossing rules. But in many instances, they're designed as stream crossings. That's an example of a town potentially imposing stricter regulation on a wetland than the state would allow. Oftentimes, the buffering, currently there is no state buffer. And obviously there are municipalities that have small buffers, large buffers and anything in between. So there is that portion of it that has been extrapolated to the buffers. But most importantly, it's this large sensitivity to wetlands at the local level that typically require that an applicant sort of go above and beyond what the state requirements would have been for a project. And I, I think that's typically the intent of the of that RSA. By forcing applicants to go to the zoning board, you're pressing this question of the five criteria and land rights and accessibility to land. And you're forcing a zoning board to make judgment on somebody's ability to utilize their property in a either legal or non-legal way. And so by forcing every applicant that wants to cross a wetland to go to the zoning board in the future, will force the zoning board to have to consider whether that applicant is worthy of developing that particular piece of upland they are trying to access. So this, this concerns me not only for my applicant, but for other landowners.
Good. Thanks for, for that input. Yeah, this, this plan is really not, we do have to look at this as, you know, a fairly minor impact at 6,000 square feet. But nonetheless, i- if they're, if they can't do this, then what else could they do with this property? If they could not do this, then they could come back with another application that's much different and potentially have different types of impacts than, than just wetlands. So just want to have everyone bear in mind there. So I'll float it back out there. I mean, if the board feels comfortable to make a motion, then we can have a decision today. And move on.
And what's the alternative, being on that one, Dirk?
Well, the alternative is waiting, getting some more opinion from SRPC and, and then getting back to Mr. Berry. And it doesn't have to be in another meeting. If it's clear recommendation from from the, from the resources we're going, going to that say, yes, you need to do that, then we can do that external of a, a direct vote. Or if it means no, you do not have to do that, then you know, we, we, we won't need a vote. So the alternative here is waiting, you know, a week or so. So the alternative here is waiting, you know, a week or so. And, and I don't think Mr. Barry has all of his plans ready yet anyway, but this is a critical design element that if, if it does not happen, then he will have to redesign quite a bit. So it is pursuant to us to keep this application moving.
And, I was gonna, I'm sorry, go ahead, Stefan.
No, I'm sorry. I was just gonna mention that Buzz is waiting to speak when you have a minute.
Go ahead, Buzz. Buzz, you're unmuted. Can you hear me? Okay, well, we'll see. Hey Buzz? Okay.
The possibility too, if, in case SRPC is unable to give us an answer, we could push it to our own legal counsel for a review. Cause I think they would give us a, I don't want to put too much on SRPC's shoulders of, you know, interpreting us, interpreting our guidelines for us. So in the event that they come back and say it's, it's on us, then that point would, would just having it totally legal be an option.
I think I'd support that approach just because I'm, I'm going back to the impact of if we do this, the precedent it sets for individual homeowners, whether it's somebody that lives on an existing single family and wants to expand something. I'd rather have more input before voting.
Okay. Anybody else have alternative opinions?
I, I support presenting this to our legal counsel and hopefully the turnaround time won't be too extended. But certainly having another pair of eyes on these regs with a possible recommendation that we tighten up the regulations at a future time. That would be what I would like to see happen.
I agree with you.
Don't want to delay it too much for the applicant either. And I, I think this option, these two options are a little bit more favorable than us potentially taking a vote tonight, which, you know, would be binding to them in one way or the other. So I just want to make sure that the applicant's okay with that process too, if, if we
Well, it, it, whether they are or not, it's up to us to make sure that we have that correctly, so. It, it's not up to them.
Can we request that the, the SRPC work while we also request from town council? So we're not waiting for one, then the other to extend that? More so from an interpret, maybe town council can help us with the interpretation portion? And maybe SRPC can help us look into the regulations of some other towns?
Sure.
I like that suggestion. Think more information definitely will help and that might expedite the process a little bit.
Yep, okay.
Can we not waste the applicant's time or the board's time until we do have the answers? This guy's been back. I mean, I haven't been on the board that long, but it's like every meeting I've been to besides a couple, this applicant has been here. I mean, I don't know, I, I feel bad for both sides. I mean, he's here, we're here, we have other, another case to hear. I, I would say until we have answers, we should not have him come back. And then if he provides them, like you said, Dirk, before, fine. But I don't think we should schedule him again until we have something that is black and white.
Yeah, I agree. And, and Mr. Eaton, you put a, a good point here is that actually the continuances have been at the request of the applicant. So it is not against, say, the town's timeline to make action, but I agree. We were hoping actually to see some materials prior to this and, and this is what we had requested back in last month was, was that we would receive written responses to the comments that had been provided to the applicant from the town, town departments and the engineering department. So we have not received those yet. And we also made comments to a number of issues regarding the drainage, its location. Some of it was on the right of way, some of it didn't respect any of the buffers on the scenic road. So we have not seen any of those responses back. So I, I would agree that we would not hear this really until that information is available. Go ahead, Mr. Barry.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, but with respect, and I think you've noted this earlier in the meeting, we're not going to spend any more time, energy, or money on this project if we are forced with the decision to either go to the ZBA or redesign our project. So we're not, we're not, I, I'm not trying to take this one step at a time, but there's really no point in, in working out details like scenic buffers if the project isn't going to move forward as it's taken shape, so.
But you're, you're also sitting on comments that have been issued since June that have not been replied to.
That's true. I've also asked for a, a lot of the reports that we referenced in the last meeting and I haven't received those. So I, I'm not pushing the
Please, you know, if you need a report, make it in writing, send it to Joanna so that we have those. And if you have, then Joanna, just make sure that those get distributed and make sure there's a response on why the reports either aren't available or get in those reports.
So lastly, I just want Mr. Chairman and the board to know, I'm not, I'm not pushing, it's not sitting here pushing the board for a decision. We want, we want to get this right and, you know, just as much as you do, because I, I personally understand the ramifications of this decision, so. We'll, I'll agree to not come back and, but I would like to have this decision so that we know how to move forward with our, our plan. So if, if we can get that either outside of public hearings or at the, whenever it might be, that's fine. But please understand that we're probably not gonna move forward with other things if this is still outstanding.
Yep, that's fine. And, and if you even want to respond to the comments that, of that, that are specific to elements that might hinge on that, then, then that's okay. You'll have to come back to respond in a different way. But, you know, we're, we're also sitting here kind of wondering what we were gonna do at this meeting too, because we haven't seen anything. So, you know, let's, let's make sure it's a clear communication via writing that states what you are looking for and, you know, we'll get you all information that's available.
Thank you.
So I, I guess that will will wait to move forward until we have a decision. So we'll, the, the board will contact Towns Legal and we'll discuss with SRPC about getting their opinion. And then we'll get that to the applicant and his agent. And hopefully that won't be, you know, hopefully that'll be within two weeks. That's what I would expect. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Barry.
So, I'm sorry, just to be clear, so Town Council will provide you guidance. Is the board then gonna want to review it and then decide on their own? Or whatever Town Council decides will be forwarded to us and then we'll deal with the ramifications?
Quite honestly, it depends on what the Town Council provides.
Okay.
We, I don't know that at this point. If it's, if it's clear and there is no ambiguity or need for planning board discussion, then we'll absolutely forward that to you.
Okay.
If it's, if it's on the subjective side of things, because there are some vagueness, then we'll have to bring it before the board.
Understood.
Okay. All right. Anything else, I guess at this point, we'll we'll have to continue it to the next meeting and move on to the next case.
Hello?
Yes, can I get a motion for continuance?
Yeah, I'm just looking for the next date. The next date, I believe, is August 26th. Is that the date you're looking at? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue case 20-003-SUB to August 26, 2020 at 7:00 PM.
I second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Do a roll call. Ed Beal?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Joe Clough?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Sue Mooney?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So that's unanimous for continuous. What this does, and, and I know some of the public are here also to potentially talk about this application. There is a public hearing that is still open. We just won't open it for this meeting. And it will stay open until the next meeting. And that would be August, what did you say again, Ed?
26.
26.
Two weeks from tonight.
So two weeks from tonight. And, and the primary reason of not hearing more information is that we don't have any more information from the applicant other than what has been heard and talked about in the previous public hearing. And, and that was on July 8th. So that's, that's the reason. So we'll continue the public hearing as well. Okay, let me go on to the next case.
Just point of order. I just wanted to clarify on a comment that was made. So when, when we continue, we generally continue to the earliest possible date that works for the board and the applicant. And the reason we do that is because we have to continue to a date certain by law. So we're not trying to drag the applicant back and forth a bunch of times or drag it out. It's just, we try to put it on the earliest so that in best case scenario, we can have action on it. Worst case scenario, we have to continue again. But that's why we, you know, when we continue, we continue to a date certain, date and time certain.
Well, what we'll do here, Ed, and I think it's best, is if we have information prior to that meeting that requires us to meet, then we will. If not, then we will just have, we won't bring the applicant back. It'll just be another vote for continuance.
Right.
Exactly. All right.
Hello? Hello?
Hello?
Um, yes, this is Jennifer in Dennisbach. We live at 27th Street. And I would just like to know that if the next meeting, if there's no new changes, that can we please be notified by certified mail when this next meeting for this subdivision is gonna happen? Because this is like the third time that we've been in here and trying to find out what's going on and still nothing new has really changed. We're very concerned about Mitchell Road and our little community down here, but you know, I, sometimes I have to work at night and I can't always be here. So if there was any way to get a certified letter for the next meeting that there is more information, I greatly appreciate it.
So the only, Joanna, you can maybe clarify this, but the only certified mailing goes out during the initial application that goes out to all of the abutters and notifies them of the meeting date when the application starts. And then they subsequent, subsequently, no further notifications go out. It is a matter of the next meeting.
Okay, because I've had two certified letters so far and I just I just thought that, and that's, the, the last certified letter was, we came on and nothing happened. We sat there for 15 minutes and nothing happened. So I guess he canceled, Mr. Barry canceled or whatever, I'm not sure.
So that, that one where it was, we actually had technical difficulties on the, the meeting itself. So the, that meeting was actually canceled unbeknownst to everybody. Unfortunately, it was a technical issue with the Zoom meeting. So it was decided that meeting was totally canceled.
Okay, so there will not be any notification other than us going on, on the 26th to find out if you guys are gonna have a meeting with, about this development.
Yes. Joanna, you wanted to say something?
Yes. So one of the ways to, to, to stay informed about this as to whether it will be continued or not is to check out the town website on the planning board page and check the agenda.
Okay.
If it will be continued, it will have a notice next to it saying for the board to determine continuation. I'm trying to find the right words, but consider, consider continuing. That's the right word.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have another member of the public that is wishing to speak. Are you going to open the public comment or will that happen at a future meeting?
Well, I will open the public comment, yeah, after, after this next applicant, as it shows on our agenda. So we'll have the, the next applicant's hearing and then we'll have public comment after that. So that public comment, that's a good point. There is a public comment period where any comment can in order, have communication with the planning board and such, so that will, will happen after the case that will be heard. So let's, let's move on. So this next case is 20005DR. That's an application from Joseph Falzone requesting a design review to subdivide apparent parcel into seven lots with five new driveways and a shared driveway. The property is owned by Diane Monty and is located on Guile Road, Nottingham, New Hampshire, and it's tax map 40, Lot 1. And I just want to note that this is a design review and this is a non-binding conversation between a potential applicant of a subdivision or site plan. And this is to help guide the applicant, but also provide the applicant some information prior to making a full application to the planning board. Because there is a lot of effort that is needed to, at, at times, depending on the size, but there's a lot of effort that's needed to go into a full application, this provides an opportunity for potential applicants to talk through their thinking on, on a parcel. Just to note, this has had a prior design review probably about six months ago. And in that design review, there was a number of public in attendance, and this was actually when we were meeting face to face. And in that meeting, there was a number of things that were brought up to the applicant. And in response to that, is my understanding, is a response to that, they have reduced the amount of lots and then reduced the amount of impact and changed the configuration of lots and such. So the applicant has heard those comments prior. And I, I want to turn it over to the applicant to describe, I guess, their newest plan and, and thinking. So whether that's Mr. Falzone or if, if your engineer or agent is here.
Evening, everyone. Scott Col from Beals. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, Scott.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the brief history. That actually saves me a little bit of speaking. Job well done. So as, as you spoke of, that we were previously at the, the plan board meeting for an open space subdivision on this particular piece of land, which had close to double the amount we are proposing now. We have gone back and done some more homework and Joe has spoken with the owner. We have come back to the board with a conventional frontage subdivision, as you stated, of seven lots. This proposal has five driveways, two of which would be common driveways. This proposal has five driveways, two of which would be common driveways. These lots all have two-acre-plus with the 30,000-square-feet buildable area. The proposal of the lots would be on septic and well. As you can see, it's a large parcel with a large amount of frontage. We have come into the board to get their opinion. We know that the abutters have some opinions on the subdivision. We understand there was a letter sent to the board. There are seven lots proposed, as I said, with five driveways, three of which would include some minor wetland impacts. Right now, it is just in concept form. The average house would be roughly a distance of 500 feet from Guile Road, keeping the historic feel of the actual road itself. All the homes would be set back and not necessarily seen from the roadway. In addition, we have Jim Gove from Gove and Mineral Services, who is the wetland scientist. As part of the conceptual design for the driveway crossings, there is a new feature that has come to light for wetland crossings in help to aid wetland critters in hydraulic flows to actually go across, which is an open-bottom structure, which we understand is very well-liked with fishing game at this point. So, we will be looking further into that. So, our goal this evening is to introduce this to the board and the abutters and get their feel on the new design.
Great. Thank you. Let me ask the board, at least to provide some comment. I did share my screen and have that up on the screen, so public should be able to see it. Anybody from the board?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, as I also resident living on Guile Road, just my first comment is, and I know that there are a number of homes similar to this plan that are set back off the road. So, just, you know, at first sight, you're, it seems appealing to me.
Ms. Chairman, it's Mr. Veale. Just some general items. So, the applicant, they mentioned the prior design review. This is a new design review because of the timeline that's elapsed, plus the major changes. So, we've confirmed previously that this is not a section of Guile Road that is scenic, so we're good there. Just want to make sure that's recorded. A few items. So, obviously, the major one would be if there's wetland impacts, that might be impacted by whatever decisions we get back from legal and SRPC that we talked about previously. Our, we have a couple of items where length-to-width ratio should generally not exceed three to one. I didn't measure these and see if they're in that route. I'd be concerned a little bit with making sure that the areas of impingement are not less than what we allow for buildable area for the lot, Propos Lot 1, Propos Lot 3. And one other item that's come up before for us is we do allow shared driveways, but part in zoning, but we require that the shared driveway be kept on the common boundary. So, a couple of these do that, but the proposed driveway for Lot 6 in Lot 7 does not stay on the shared boundary. It pretty much is mostly on Lot 6.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that that's probably due to, you know, the wetlands and not wanting to, you know, carry that all the way up with that impact.
And then just also, the areas where they show buildable area, like Lot 1, 3, 4, and 5, that's not contiguous. I just want to make sure that that's not actually part of the calculation for the buildable envelope.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yep.
I just wanted to know if Mr. Falzone has addressed the cemetery that we know about on this parcel. It's probably mostly on Lot 2. I don't see it marked on there at all, but I think it would require probably some kind of ground penetrating radar to find exactly where the parameters are, since the field stones are no longer there.
Mr. Cole, do you know of, make sure that that's located on a plan?
Yeah, actually, Mr. Falzone had a historian actually look at the property, and I believe the cemetery that was thought, once thought to be on the premises is further down the road. Joe, are you available to speak?
You're on mute, Mr. Falzone. Joanna, could you get him off mute?
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
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 Yes, I've spent a considerable amount of money with a scientist, and we're confident that we know the general area where the one cemetery is. Some people keep alluding to two cemeteries. The other cemetery is not on this property. All these large lots are large enough so that we can put the 25-foot buffer that's required by the state around the cemetery. I'm very well-versed with cemeteries. I have five of them on various properties. And mostly, you as board members are new, but the development I did in Nottingham on Route 4 is the one that the builder found a casket in when he was building a driveway that had a glass-enclosed face. And when the state got involved with that, unfortunately, I had to pay the amount of money to remove it. So, I'm being very careful to make sure that I gain all the knowledge there is about this one small cemetery. And we think we have a good handle on it. And the person is correct. I guess all the headstones were bulldozed, and we have a general idea where those are located. So, yes, that will be addressed.
Does that answer that question, Leanne?
Well, I'm just wondering if the report that Mr. Falzone had done by the historian will be sent to the Department of Historical Resources? If we'll be provided with a copy also to see exactly where the cemetery is located?
We're gonna comply with the state regulation and do whatever is required.
Yeah, I'm sure. I would say that that would be a request during that application, that we receive some copies of that.
Absolutely.
Any other board members with comments?
Mr. Chair, I had a couple. Some of them already have been mentioned. It's a little hard to tell from the scale, just because I didn't have a scale with me as to what the proposed width of the lots was, but most of them do seem to exceed the suggested three-to-one ratio. One question, maybe Mr. Gove can answer this. On Lot 3, there's, looks like almost two pockets. There's two elliptical-shaped dash lines within the wetlands. I'm just curious if that's, is there anticipated to be any sort of prime wetland or significance to that? And then my last comment was that some of these driveways will definitely be long, especially for 6 and 7. And if there's any discussion that the applicant has had with the fire department, just due to their length.
For the record, my name is Jim Gove. And those areas which are outlined within the wetlands are areas which we identified as bernal pools. So, these are areas where we found egg masses of wood frogs and salamanders. We have already been in touch with the Department of Environmental Services. And so, we specifically wanted to know whether or not this kind of layout, where we were crossing the wetlands in essentially three locations with driveways, whether this would be considered to be permissible. And so, they had indicated to us that, yes, they thought that this was permissible. That's not getting us, we didn't get a permit. This was just a pre-application discussion. One of the reasons why we're suggesting eco-passages at each one of the crossings, and essentially Scott did explain it, that it's an open bottom, but it's more than just an open bottom box. It actually has an open grate on the top. And what's been found by biologists is that salamanders, reptiles, species will pass through those eco-passages more readily because they can actually, there's light in there. And so, there's not, they don't see like, you know, something waiting at the other end to eat them. And so, that's why these eco-passages are being proposed, because we do have these bernal pools on site. So, we know that we have some reptile and amphibian use there. And so, that's why I went to the eco-passages for all of the crossings.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just respond to Ian. We do realize some of the driveways are somewhat lengthy, and we are, we do understand that we will be providing NFPA turnarounds for fire apparatus. Anything over 150 feet long, I believe is the criteria. And as long as that meets the code with the fire chief, we will provide that. In addition, going forward, the proposal would be for these buildings or homes to be sprinkled as well.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments from the board members? I would like to maybe hear a little bit from the public of any other concerns.
Mr. Chairman, this is Susan. I'm just interested in the topography and the flowage direction of the wetland system. Looking at this large-scale map, it appears that all of the wetlands do flow under Guile Road across from Lot 7, and I just wanted to ask if that presumption is correct.
Hi, this is Jim Gove again. So, what we actually have here is if we start at Lot 2, we actually see that's a seepage coming out of the ground. On Lot 3, there's a culvert underneath Guile Road that flows onto Lot 3 from that isolated wetland. And then we have a channel that starts to develop on Lot 4 and continues on down to Lot 5. And then the stream actually flows onto Lot 7, and it doesn't go onto Guile Road. We have another stream on the other side of Guile Road, which flows onto Lot 7, combines with that combines with that stream, and then the entire stream flows, in this case, to the right of the drawing. So, we actually have, that's correct. That arrow is correct in terms of the directed flow that we have. Yes, that's accurate. Right.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other board members? I'll just open it up to the public. Okay, so Steph, I'm gonna probably need some help just managing if there, if you do have a question in the participant side, if you could just raise your hand.
Oh, we do have one raised hand from Todd Nicole Marvel.
Okay, yeah.
I'm gonna unmute you guys right now. You are all set.
Hello, so Todd Marvel, 47th Street. I'm an abutter to the Mitchell Road project. Do you want me to wait until the end and everybody else can go through what they need to go through and we can talk about?
Yeah, unless it's specific to this application, then, yeah, if you can hold on just a couple minutes.
No problem.
Thank you. Any public specifically wanting to talk about this Guile Road application?
Mr. Chairman, it's point of order. It's Mr. Veale. I think now would be a pertinent time. I think we did get a letter from residents of Guile Road as abutters, a cumulative letter that they asked to be read into the meeting.
Do you have that letter?
I can, yep. One sec.
I'm gonna have it more than likely here, just...
Okay, if I read it?
Yes.
A letter dated August 11, 2020, the Nottingham Planning Board. RE Comment Response to Design Review for Proposed Guile Road Subdivision Map 40 Lot 1-7. Dear Mr. Chairman, as a group of concerned Guile Road residents and abutters, we request that this letter be read aloud by the Chair, Vice Chair, and submitted into the minutes of tonight's meeting. We have reviewed Mr. Falzone's proposed plan to subdivide a parcel of land, tax map 40 Lot 1. Offer the following comments. Mr. Falzone filed the design review of an 18-house development of the same parcel of land in January of 2019. We raised a number of concerns to the planning board about his two versions of that plan, and we're pleased that you did not pursue either plan. As we understand it, this current proposal is a new plan and not a revision of this original plan. In 2019, we stated the following in that meeting. We, as residents of Nottingham, have major concerns about the impact of this amount of continued growth on Nottingham's future, especially as it relates to its rural landscape, historic villages, and community values as stated in the vision statement approved by the town residents in the 2011 master plan. This level of growth cannot continue while at the same time maintain the stated vision to retain the rural character and small-town values of Nottingham. Our concern remains the same, given the two proposals that you have in front of you today, which will add 23 new homes and two proposed subdivisions. Let me remind you once again how our master plan defines rural character. A community with some or all of the following characteristics. Open farm fields, farm buildings and barns, unfragmented forests, stone walls, tree-lined scenic roadways, dark skies, slopes and hilly terrain, ponds, streams and waterways of high quality for fishing and boating, small historic villages and crossroads, historic homes in the New England vernacular. Over the years, our section of Guile Road has exemplified Nottingham's definition of rural character. It's a quiet and peaceful road with minimal traffic that has been safe for raising our children as well as for a variety of recreational activities, including walking, running, and biking. We take pride and appreciate the fact that many people come from other parts of Nottingham and surrounding towns for these sorts of activities, because they too value the serenity and safety of our stretch of road. Although this plan is similar than his original one, it's, I'm sorry, although this plan is smaller than his original one, it will change the character of our road and neighborhood. In addition, we have a major concern about the impact of these developments on our town's existing infrastructure. Every new development adds additional stress to the already fragile town infrastructure, including police, fire, schools, road maintenance, recycling center. We understand that you, as our elected planning board, have the grave responsibility to interpret and uphold the stated values written in our master plan. Just because a developer can satisfy the regulations for subdevelopment does not mean that every open space in this town should be developed. We would ask that you carefully consider the impact on the rural character, historic heritage, local environment, and the town's infrastructure as you consider these two plans. In the event that you allow Mr. Falzone to move to the next phase of the planning process with the Guile Road project, we would ask that you consider imposing the following conditions and covenants to mitigate against some of the impact of his plan on our neighborhood and road. Install a fire system for the subdivision. Do not allow any further development or subdivisions of any of the proposed lots. Require the allocation of a 30-acre green space out of Propos Lot 7. Do not allow any further wetland impacts. Require that all utilities be buried underground. Require that all houses be custom-built, single-family structures, no mobile or modular structures. Require a thorough review of the proposed driveways to ensure they meet the NFPA requirements for long driveways and long shared driveways. Turnarounds for emergency vehicles may be necessary. Require paved aprons for each driveway and extend the paving beyond the wetland areas to ensure that the function of the small animal passages are not destroyed by erosion, including loose sand and gravel. Ensure that each proposed driveway entrance meets a requirement for site distance. Locate and ensure protection for the two cemeteries on this parcel of land. Thank you for your consideration of our concerns. Sincerely, Guile Road residents.
All right, thank you, Ed. There's a lot said there, and I think it's all really good information. And I appreciate that. It, just to assure... It, just to assure the residents of Guile Road, the planning board, what you outline there is basically our mission. I mean, we take all of these applications individually and looking at them relative to Nottingham's rural character and the impacts that they might hold. So that, that is something that we do with each and every application. And we also do that through our master planning and we have active sections going on constantly where we're updating them. And I guess this is, this will be my soapbox, that anybody who's interested in getting onto a master plan committee to help guide the future of Nottingham, to contact Joanna. She'll put you in touch with, with our master plan committee. Back to this specific design review, those are issues that will be certainly brought up during the application process if we see this as an application coming in. And that, that puts a good framework around specifics that we'd be looking at. So again, appreciate the residents of Guile Road for putting that together. And I don't think that it's appropriate to respond to all or really any of it other than that, because there's just a lot of information there that will be developing during the application process, so. Mr. Falzone?
Yes, for some of the members may not have been present, I know you mentioned that you thought we were in there six months ago, but we were in there over a year ago. And I know at the time you were the chairman, but just to bring attention to, we proposed 18 lots in a conservation subdivision and we talked also about a conventional. Both of those, the board really wasn't inclined to see. And if you take a look at my letter that I submitted to you, they wanted to retain the rural character of the road. This is what this plan does. It's larger than a lot of plans, lots that are on that road. We've pushed the houses back. We have an absolute right under the law to put these driveways in and to access our uplands. And I don't agree that you can send every plan that comes in that has a wetland crossing to the ZBA. That is impossible. You would be overwhelmed with people coming in if they wanted to fill in 10 square feet of wetlands. So as I outlined in my, in my letter, I've done everything possible to satisfy the reasonable requests. And I will be coming back in with this design, the seven lots. And I was hoping to get a feel based upon the members that were at the first hearing that this reduced large lot house setback plan is something that you may like or not like. Because the only alternative is to do nothing with the parcel, which isn't gonna happen.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Falzone. I mean, yeah, I was with, I've been on the board for 10-plus years, so I do remember that design review. It seems like it was just six months ago, but you're probably right, it was probably a year ago. There was significant opposition and I think concerns at that time. And, and in my opinion, this is a much more fitting development for the character that Nottingham does have. So that's my own personal opinion. It's a much better, less dense, more open space than the previous design review that we had seen. So for that, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other board members like to chime in on anything that might help guide the application? Okay. Well, I, I think it's, it's a positive meeting here, Mr. Falzone. I think there's, without a lot of issues from board members, this is, you know, looking like it's a pretty good start to the application.
Thank you. All right, thank you everyone.
All right, yep, well, thank you for, for attending.
Do you have to close the public hearing? All right.
Design reviews, it's not even a hearing, it's not necessarily, so no, I don't have to close a public hearing because there won't be a continuance or anything.
Is there any public comment offered to the public?
I requested it. The only thing we heard was that letter and we could forward a copy of that, but if there are other public members that have comment or questions, now would be the time to ask it. Stephanie?
We do have Todd and Nicole Marvel raise their hand. So you guys are, oh, trying to unmute you. Oh, there you go, we're all set.
So again, this is, I just didn't want to lose my place in regards to Mitchell Road project.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
I'm glad I'm not on Mitchell Road.
Any?
We're glad you're not.
We're glad you're not there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think that was it from the public.
All right, thank you.
All right. So we'll move on in the agenda. I, I guess I'd like to move the public comments ahead of the staff and board updates, seeing that there are still some public available here. Before we get into some of the business parts of meeting minutes and, and updates, let's go to the public comments. And what I would like to ask is that please keep your comments brief and, you know, we'll answer questions we can, but if they are specific to an application like Mitchell Road, we may not be able to answer them because it's outside the public hearing. So we want to make sure that we're not providing information that is not heard during that public meeting process, so just bear that in mind. So Steph, if you could unmute Todd and Nicole for the third time.
All right, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so Todd Marvel, 4 Sutton Street, a butter to the Mitchell Road project. So I just want to state that, you know, the, the intent of the wetlands protection is to protect the wetlands, right? And it's not, it's not trivial, number one. And number two, that anything that dredge and fill, anything that has dredge and fill is a state, requires state approval. So I've actually contacted the Wetlands Bureau and the Land Management Water Division at the DES and are asking them to look into this also. And there were a couple of statements that the applicant noted and that was like, where's compliant as possible? And I, you know, you're either compliant or you're not compliant. So we want to make sure that they are compliant. And I challenge that it's 6,000 feet of impact, square feet, I think it's more than that. And I want the state to look into that and I've expressed my concerns to them. And also, you know, the real reason that any of these people want to develop is, is money, so they get more money for more houses. So, you know, that Mitchell project can be redesigned without impacting the wetlands. It will, you know, result in fewer homes, but it is an alternative and I want the town to look at that, right? And the last thing I want to say is that public comment should be encouraged, it shouldn't be suppressed. I work nights, this is the first chance I've had to attend a meeting without missing work. So I just don't want the board to forget that. And it would have been nice to have the applicant hear my comments and not at this point in time when everybody's gone. Thank you.
I, I appreciate that and, you know, I'll just bring up a couple things. So the, the state DES, the applicant is required to file an application with them. So they will have, you know, review, comment, and a permit with conditions. So that will happen. And, and in regards to the, the public hearing, I just didn't want to spend a lot of people's time on information that we, is the same as the last public hearing. So I apologize that you weren't able to get this right directly to the applicant. I assure you, he will eventually hear all of these comments and we go through a pretty rigorous comment review period, so your comments are not alone and, yep.
You know, thank you for your time and I just don't want the board to forget that, you know, wetlands are important, right? And for various reasons, that's why the rules and regulations are there. And compliant as possible is not.
Compliant, yeah.
It's not compliant. Okay?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Mr. Veal, just one more, one more comment. Make sure that the, you know, butters are aware. We do value the public comment in the, in the, especially the butters, that they get a voice to speak for or against or just have questions answered. We understand that unfortunately, not everybody can attend meetings, but we do have to hold the meetings based on, on the law. So what I, what I ask of anybody that has a comment, they want to make sure that it's heard, is to email it in or mail it in. In the event that you're, you get to attend the meeting, then you get to speak, you know, personally. But worst-case scenario, something comes up last minute and you miss the meeting, that your comments don't get missed. And then that's another reason we don't push these applications through usually on the first meeting, is that oftentimes there's at least one continuance on major subdivisions. It's to make sure that there kind of is that time for the public to have vetted it and have a chance to comment.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I want to, for, for the time and the thought, I mean, and not just pushing these things through, I appreciate the deliberation in the, in the, in the comments that are considered. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public have their hand raised or like to add to that? And even if it's not about a specific application, this is the time that we do provide comment for public at every meeting. And it doesn't have to be about a specific application, it could be about roads, it could be about the master plan, it could be a lot of things that you might have a question on or just interested in what the board has been up to. I see, seeing no more for public comment, then let's, let's go back into the normal agenda, which has staff and board meeting updates. Let me just go through the members here. I'm gonna start out with, with Mr. Eaton, the selectman's rep.
Okay, we had a meeting on the 10th. Then we had the schools, the school board committee came in discussing the, you guys probably heard that Stratford's leaving the SAU, so they're looking into whether, you know, does Nottingham, can we go it on our own? Stick with Northwood or possibly seek, looking to join another SAU with a different town? So they're looking into that and will be getting back to us. We also had the butters of the property that held the snowmobile, what are they called?
Water crossing?
East Water Cross. And we had them come in, yes, we had a butters from, on Raymond Road and we also had a butters from Blake Road in Epping. But also one of the owners of the property on Blake Road in Epping, his property extended, he also went to Nottingham. So they had concerns about the, again, being notified, they said they weren't notified, some not until the night before. So we're working that out with the people holding the event. Gave them some guidelines to get back to us immediately before we tell them to proceed with the next one, which is in two weeks. Haven't heard yet if they've done that, but they were supposed to be doing that yesterday and today. And besides that, we, we had the PLIA Lakos come in, as they do a few times a year, so they're doing all the cleanup and stuff at the Tuckaway. And then we had the election committee come in and they went over upcoming elections. And that was it.
Great, thank you. I'll go to Sue Mooney.
Mr. Chairman, if I might jump in, because I just wanted to respond, it's Mr. Veal again, sorry everybody. I wanted to respond to one of those items that the board of selectmen addressed. So when, when a business comes into town and begins operating in town, normally there's a process for that. It either goes to the planning board for site plan or the zoning board for variances, depending on what the usages are. We have permissible use zoning ordinance, meaning we say what's permitted, everything else is not. So I feel like the select board has usurped a process here of elected officials in permitting a commercial entity to operate. The last time we were, had a meeting, it was discussed that the board of selectmen did it as a one-time only and that any future events would have to go to the site plan, to the planning board or zoning board for approval. And now it's the case where that's not occurring. The whole point of the planning process and the zoning process is that there's a legal process behind it and legal requirements to notify butters that have to be upheld. So that butters get a chance to speak for, against, or get general questions answered about the event. The way the select board is handling this is pulling that directly out of both those boards' hands.
Oh, I think if I can intervene here, I mean, again, we're looking at a, again, everybody, they, they keep picturing Fremont, which it will never be Fremont, we made that very clear. We can say the amount of people and all that, but one time means, and that's what we said, they plan three events a year, that's if they, if they can make it through this year. We figured that's, that's the one thing, we're gonna, we're saying yes. But they've already been told if they plan on continuing this in 2021, they're coming to you. They, they were told that the other night, they were told that previously as well. But it's, we look at it's an event that we found out through the butters, that I mean, again, it's private property, so this has been going on for a while. That's one of the things that was, you know, the butters weren't happy about saying, we've been hearing these snow machines for a long time. As we told, it's private property. If they're doing it, there's no noise ordinance in Nottingham. These guys can do whatever they want. They started bringing up they were shooting guns, they were doing this, they were doing that. You know, it's private property, I guess they can do whatever they want. So.
That's not, that's not true. You can't do anything you want just because you own the property.
No, I don't mean, I don't, I don't mean like that, but they can do, they can, they can ride dirt bikes, they can ride snowmobiles.
That all changes though when it becomes a business. So you have a business operating that is charging admission, they're advertising that they're allowing camping, they're having fireworks, bonfires, it's three days each time. So again, there's a process for this, it's planning board and zoning board. Because it allows public comment, when, when a business comes in and operates in a way that is different than any other business that's been operating there before, it's supposed to go for, for a review. And, and that is the legal process to give the butters a chance to speak and a chance to make sure that they know about it. Because they also have a quality of life, you know, that, that they, and property values and such that they're responsible for. I have nothing against any particular applicant or anything, I just, and I'm not picturing any other events. It's that when, by the processes that we have established, if a business comes in and is operating, we did this for the fernal property when they were, originally when they were leasing out the, the structures until we decided that if it was the same kind of use, that it's permitted. But if it's a change of use, they would have to come back with the site plan, then that's a commercial property. This property is in the residential agricultural district, so, so you have to be mindful of, yes, the landowners' rights and, but also the landowners' rights of the, of those around them. And I'm not saying how the board of selectmen are permitting a process that it's a business, so that falls to the, to the planning board or the zoning board.
Well, I mean, I don't know if, I mean, this northeast Water Cross or whatever, whatever the hell they're called, they're not. water cross or whatever, whatever the hell they're called, they're not the, they don't own the property. They're, they're just putting on the event at the okay of the property owner. So it's not their property. So I mean, but they, the, the whole thing has been told they have to go in front of the planning board.
So
there would have never been a, anything happening this year if they would have came one month ago and said they want to come before us right now.
Their planning is not our, our problem.
No, I know. I understand that. So again, I'm on the board. We, we were, we were advised that we, we could do this. The board agreed to go ahead and let them do it for the one-time thing. And again, but we said that you will have, you must go in front of the planning board if you want to go forward.
So Tyler, when it was, when it was, let me just ask the question, when it was one-time thing, but that's over three weekends?
Yeah, we, we usually like, so
It's three times.
Three, three times throughout the year. Yeah. Once in whatever, June, July, again in August, and then one at the end of September. So, but I don't know if that's what will be their plan next year or what, but that's, that's what we basically said. I mean, we're not going to let you do it every weekend. But it wasn't until the hearing the other night that we found out that this had been going on, but it wasn't the actual outfit that's running the races. There were just people going there. Asking the landowner, can we go in? And, you know, they were, they were letting them do it. So I, I, I mean, as a board member, I mean, I did have a problem with, I mean, you know, the people from Epping came that they were, they're more than welcome to come. But jeez, I mean, people in Nottingham can hear Sash Speedway. They can hear New England Dragway. We can hear Lee Raceway. What are we going to do about that? Are we going to try to, you know, stop those events or? I mean, I'm concerned about Nottingham residents and there was, I think there was four of them there. There was more Epping residents there was than there was Nottingham.
Tyler, I'm just curious why the board felt it was okay to give permission for this year, but if starting next year, they want planning, the planning board to give input.
Because we were told that's, that's what we could do.
By who?
We were, we were told. I came from the town administrator.
Okay.
I mean, again, we don't, you know, this is another thing. If this outfit or whatever, if it's successful, right? Look at it as they, they're, they're having, holding an event, trying to use Nottingham vendors at the event. If, if, if they're able to do it or whatever, it's something that could be good for the town. A couple of us select board members attended the thing for an hour, an hour and a half. And we, there was well over 60% of the people there were from Nottingham. So it's not like, you know, we, we were trying to avoid them coming to the planning board.
What kind of numbers were there? Just ballpark, you know?
I don't know. I would say maybe in the range of 300. But what happens is, I mean, not, so when you, when you get there Saturday and they start, so you have teams that are racing. And then, you know, say you're, you're in a race and you end up losing and you're out of it. So that team packs up and leaves. So by the end of Sunday, you just have however many there is that are in the championship or whatever. I mean, again, you had a lot of, they had over 40, 45 people working it. Now it was from anything from, you know, parking people. You know, they were selling water and, you know, it was, it was really, again, I, I at first had, you know, visions of walking into a, you know, which could be dangerous, but it was, it was, I couldn't believe the amount of families that were there. And they were socially distancing. The, I don't know if everybody's ever been back on that parcel of property. It is enormous. And we actually walked down into the pit row where all the races are and we got to take a real good look at the other side of the pond. And I mean, there wasn't, you know, nearly the amount of people that we thought would be there. I want to say that they said it was maybe at 550 to 600 all three days. That's, you know, that's depends on what day it was, but.
Yeah, I don't want to beat up the select rep on this. I just want to really make the point that again, there's no judgment about the entity itself or the event itself. It's specifically the process in that if a commercial enterprise comes into town and is utilizing a land for other than it's been used in the, in the past, it's supposed to go for at least a site plan review. And it should at least be vetted by the zoning board and, and planning board chair before the board of selectmen makes a decision. We're elected officials as well. And, and we have a process and it's our duties to uphold, you know, the, the planning, the, the master plan, subdivision regulations, zoning regulations and site plan review. So when a commercial entity is coming in and the board of selectmen effectively usurps our power and states they can permit commercial entities to operate anyway, regardless of what's been there in the past and hold things that we generally don't allow, like camp, camping, bonfires, fireworks, lots of events without any input, legal notice to abutters. That's troubling to me as a landowner in town.
But I mean, the fireworks, so that was another thing that came up again, when they said they had fireworks and again, who gave them the, who, who told them they could have fireworks? Take a guess. Where did they get the permit? From an entity in town? Fire department. That's what the Epping, that's what the Epping people were most concerned about saying, hey, we have hay fields out there. One of these fireworks lands in them and I, that, I, I agree, you know, that's, we didn't have any idea that there was going to be fireworks. It really didn't. But when they came the other night, that's what they said. They had got the permit from the fire department.
And so there's another event you said in two weeks and then another one in October?
Possibly. I mean, that's, they, they were given the stipulations the other night of, again, when the butters came in. I mean, they were told what they had to do, had to prove that they did or whatever. And I'm seeing just Facebook media and stuff like that right now and it doesn't sound like it's going too good. So, but I haven't stopped, I'm going to stop by the town hall tomorrow and speak with Chris.
Okay. Well, I'll definitely mention this issue and we may just, we may just come up with a letter.
I would say that maybe somebody, you know, from the planning board attend the next select board meeting.
Yep.
Get you on the agenda. And then, because I, again, I don't know how it happened without going through you, but I guess it would be a good time to find out.
Yeah, we'll plan on doing that then.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Tyler. I'm just beating you up because you're the rep that's here tonight.
That's okay. I get beat up all the time. I'm fine with it.
All right, Ed, you going to have any more comments? Because I'm going to move on to someone else.
No, I promised that I'd review the, the, a couple of items from the, our zoning review the last time, but I could push those to the next time. Not a big deal.
Yeah. All right, Gary, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, last meeting, not sure how, I don't remember how it exactly came up, but about our, well, we were talking about our trails, road committee, et cetera. And so it was mentioned about contacting Colin over at Stratford Regional. Actually, I think Steph might have put a bug in his ear because he contacted me first. So I didn't really have, feel like I had a lot of information to give him. Did tell him regarding bicycle routes. I was going to be looking into that, which I did. But he was also asking, you know, whether our subcommittee for traffic has met, which obviously we haven't yet in some time. And also was talking, he did bring up the fact that we had a discussion some time ago about a safety study regarding mainly bicycles and pedestrians around Route 156 generally. And I'm sorry. Yeah, well, anyway, around, you know, our, our roads through town. So we haven't, I really didn't give him much. I didn't feel like I had much to give him. But yeah, so maybe a time to, to, to see if we can get back to that subcommittee.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're right. We'll try and pick a date. You know, maybe the next meeting or maybe I'll just send out some feelers of when people would be available and we can just have a subcommittee meeting outside of the planning board meeting.
Sounds great.
Thanks. Ian, do you have anything?
Nothing for me tonight.
Joe, you've been quiet all night?
Yeah, I apologize. I had to step away. My dog got sick. I didn't, he walked up to me and said, I need to go outside and then he threw up right next to my teeth. So hopefully it's nothing serious.
Thanks for staying on mute for that.
Yeah, it was, it was very quiet. He kind of surprised me with it. But, no, no other updates for me.
Leanne?
Nope, nothing for me tonight.
Buzz, you still with us?
Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Ah, good. I figured out how to unmute myself. No, I'm all set.
Thank you. Sue?
I just wanted to say that the Conservation Commission and the Nottingham Trails Committee is very grateful to Sean McLean, our Public Works Director and, and his crew. They've been putting up river crossing signs and you might have noticed them at various places around town. The North River and the Little River and Elliot River on Deerfield Road. And also Sean has been working with the Trails Committee in assisting us with, working on trail projects such as Marsh Woods, which is on Freeman Hall Road that abuts the town recycling area. And that's it. Thank you.
Great. I miss anybody? Joanna?
Nothing major, except thank you all that came in and signed the plans. I will get those registered hopefully tomorrow. Other than that, I don't have anything real big. That's about it right now.
Steph?
I just have a couple of quick things. The first one is that Stratford Regional Planning Commission Commissioners had previously expressed interest in creating subcommittees for recycling and resilience. So those are underway. I believe the recycling subcommittee has already had a meeting. If you're interested in anything that those guys are doing, just drop me a note and let me know and I can get you more information. And then our Pathways to Play Plan received some additional funding. So now it's, the second phase is promoting outdoor play. So I was talking today with the Parks and Rec Director and they are setting up a meeting to talk with SRPC staff to review some of the recreational sites that we have identified and how to further incorporate them into our regional database and promote them for the town of Nottingham.
Great. Cool. Anybody I missed or? I mean, I think that's all we have for updates. Did we have minutes that we wanted to clear out or? Okay. What, which ones?
Site plan, site walk minutes? That's Sue submitted.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the site walk?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve minutes for June 30th for a site walk minutes.
Motion, is there a second?
This is Mr. Veal, a second.
Motion is second. All in favor indicate, well, I guess I have to do a roll call. Ed Veal?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Joe Clough?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton? Sue Mooney?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Myself. I would say that's unanimous. And then any other minutes?
No.
Okay, as I, as I read the roll call here, my family gives me a hard time because that's what they, they keep on saying those names over and over and over again because they know them so much. So you guys are famous in my house.
Oh, good. Thanks.
All right, thanks, everyone. Motion for dismiss.
I move, will you adjourn?
Motion is second. Everybody sign off and we'll know that that was unanimous. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night, Tyler.